All right. I'll call the meeting to order. Let's see, should we meet our new deputy?
Yes.
Master?
Yep.
All right. Welcome. We'll go around the table if that's okay and introduce ourselves. My name is Courtney Johnson, I'm the mayor.
Lori Sayer, council member.
Glenn Henry, council member.
Kristi Mott, council member.
Brad Garrett, city manager.
Lynn Schute, finance director.
Erin Smith, community development director.
Chad Shell, public services director.
Vicki Sunzaiden, city clerk.
Erin Schmidt, assistant city engineer.
Dan Lohner, city engineer.
Now we're on the same back.
Say, I will probably remember all of those names. I'll remember Brent's because I've seen yours in emails before.
That has been anything else you have access to. Um, well, welcome. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? Do you want to play two truths and a lie?
Sure, I can do a little of both, I guess.
Okay. Well, then don't talk too much about yourself.
Oh, sure. Should I start with two truths?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Uh, I have a master's degree. I played violin for sixteen years. And I played two sports in college.
Oh, it's almost unanimous.
Is this number for?
This is the one we think is the lie.
So a lot of people don't think it is the lie. The violins, two or three. Everybody believes numbers.
Really? Interesting. Well, I only have a bachelor's degree.
Oh. Wow. Okay, well said.
We didn't think you looked that athletic.
I'm not going to do that.
What's wrong?
Uh, Northwestern in St. Paul.
So is this on your call in the hall?
No. I did play violin my whole life growing up. I mostly hated it, but my mom forced me to do it. And I'm glad she didn't know it. Gives you a lot of good life skills, I think, so. Yeah, I went to Northwestern for four years. And then I started Carver County about two years ago. I was in the National Guard for eight years. I got deployed last year, so I was gone for a whole year, which was interesting. Right off of FTO, I got deployed. So that was fun. Yeah, I did my FTO, my first session of FTO in Carver with Charlie Poser.
Oh, yeah.
A few years ago. And then I've been covering the South District for the last seven-ish months, six, seven months, which covers Carver obviously as well. So I spent a lot of time here. I feel like I know the city pretty well. I'm excited to start in the new role.
Welcome. And you start right after senior days?
Yes, the 12th.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. He likes to say he had that hunting trip that was planned and it seemed to work. If not everyone's aware, some of the movement within the office, the sheriff's office, we have what's called our employee growth and development program. Deputy Sandberg had submitted interest now a couple of times for a position within our investigations unit team. And in order to foster some growth within, you know, the sheriff's office from patrol to investigations and things like that, we look to give our deputies opportunities in those assignments. And so that is the reason for the change in the liaison position. Joey's done a good job on the Team Two Knights. He's got the familiarity with Carver. Life experiences that relates to, you know, the deployment that he was part of. And overall, just a good character and a good grasp of policing as an area. But that's a little bit behind why there's going to be the change. Deputy Ross Heitz will still be the PM. Deputy, as it relates to that, Katie will still be part of his team both days. And then to transition after that. And so we're excited for Joey to get the opportunity, a little bit of a different role, a little daytime, you know, might have to bear with him a little bit after coming off of Knights. But we're excited for the opportunity for both of them within the organization.
I'm excited that Katie is getting to advance her career, but it's bittersweet because she's done a great job in Carver and she's going to be missed. We're excited to have you on board.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. You guys are welcome to stay. We're going to be talking about the long-term financial plan and our immediate savings.
Is there any other questions or anything like that? Okay. All right. Fair enough.
Welcome, Joey.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you at the hotel.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ashley?
Yes, Anne.
Welcome. If you would come and sit at the table, you're welcome to.
Your turn for the hot seat.
She's like the exception to the rule. Who doesn't have to play two truths and a lie? So that was the new deputy. And I always make new folks play two truths and a lie. You're here to visit. Okay. First item on the agenda is the long-term financial plan draft review. Thank you.
So staff has been very busy the past couple of months getting our capital needs improvements ready for the city council to review. The long-term financial plan identifies these capital improvements. And then we use the revenue and growth assumptions to determine the city's ability to cash flow or take out debt to finance these. The long-term financial plan also uses the assumptions of growth operations, capital needs to identify the financial impact of these factors and how they are going to affect the city tax rate or the utility rates. So it's important that we update this long-term financial plan annually because these assumptions are always changing, along with the needs of the city, the city's capital equipment needs and the infrastructure. And as you know, Carver's growing extremely fast and those needs are always changing as well. So today we're only talking about part one of the capital improvement plan, which is the capital equipment, the capital improvement plan. So like the infrastructure and what we need. So capital equipment, we're going to review and assess all the equipment in the plan. Infrastructure, we're going to identify the needs and priorities of future infrastructure projects. We'll talk about future hiring needs. Sorry, I'm not scrolling. Reviewing the full-time staffing needs. And then also future needs, providing council with an updated capital improvement plan analysis for the next five years. So with that, I did give you each a copy of the plan. I did call out the top ten investments by cost for the capital improvement plan. This has been updated. Number one, I think, was not correct on the website. The Southwest Service Area Trunk Utility Extension. I think that figure might have been wrong on our presentation on the online maybe. But that's the highest amount, just four million for that. And then it goes down all the way to the turnout gear building addition of four hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Just a note on the trunk utility extension. That's at this point planned to be part of that trunk area charge. So it's not necessarily a cost related to connection fees or rates. But it is a capital cost that we have to plan for.
And something you have to bond for.
Correct. Essentially how that would work out, not to like skip ahead of a topic, but you know, when Dan is able to present that, it essentially works as the city upfronts the money to do the project. And then you separate the costs based on acreage or whatever unit, you know, and then that in turn pays that bond issue and it's back over time, so.
And then just calling out a couple.
You know what? I'm sorry. Yeah. Since we're just on the one, can you remind me? When we're talking about the area, where this is exactly going?
So right now it's a little bit of a, I mean, the general area is you're taking water and sanitary sewer utilities from Carver West Parkway to the southwest to essentially the intersection of County Road 11 and 40 where 11 turns to Jordan. So you have to, you'd be running that pipe under County Road 11 from that stretch. And so Dan and Erin are working on that analysis, that number, and then determining how many acres of property that's going to service. So then from there, you know, we'd be waiting for someone to say, well, okay, we want to do a project. So you're not, there'll be a whole, I would say, set of decisions and analysis that we'll prepare and you'll need to decide on in order for the city to punch that ticket and say, hey, we're going to do this extension project.
Okay. And I know we had talked about north and south. So we were more landing on the south side? I don't remember. Okay.
We have north and south. We have put the south on first because we have met with the development team from Summer Gate who owns a bunch of property. And they are eagerly waiting to get going. And so we don't have anybody on the north side that's telling us they're ready to go. So, you know, we told them actually, like, probably the fastest we could go would be to do a construction project in 2024. So that's why we have it listed there. Because we still have to do, obviously, a lot of process and approvals. And Dan and Erin kind of need to help us with that work. But Dan and Erin sat in on that meeting with me and, you know, they're ready. I don't know if you want, if there's any fill in the blanks that I'm missing in context, Dan?
No, I think you caught it very well. They want to go and they just needed to hear that there's an option. So right now that's what is happening.
Okay.
His proceeding.
I mean, just one add on point. Because they didn't feel like they had heard that from us, they were prepared to like bring in landowners and themselves to a council meeting to like try to advocate for your support to even study it. So we assured them, like, it's already in the pipeline, we're studying it. But at some point, I'm sure you'd like to hear from them. But we're just not at that point because we don't have all the data analyzed yet.
And then we have, so we have the same thing, different prices, but we, number one and number five are listed for the same year, 2024.
I think that's just a.
Oh, I probably just deleted, I'm sorry.
We had thought that 1.6 was our budget number, but.
Okay.
Late, was it third, last Friday, we knew we had to get this out. And with pipe costs and construction costs, that number went from 1.6 to 4.2.
That was my error.
Okay. So we don't have a double of?
Nope. I was in vacation mode.
Okay.
Just a triple of price.
That's just, yeah, that is just the nature of everything.
All right.
Thanks for explaining, like, I didn't know.
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
It was answered.
Okay. And then we just call it a couple of the staffing positions that we foresee. Public services technician, which is broken out into general water and sewer, and then a communications specialist. So with that, I did provide you each a copy of the proposed long-term capital plan for the equipment and infrastructure. And we can just go through that, take a peek.
Just kind of one click. Thing to emphasize what Lynette said earlier is similar to how we did this last year. We're asking you to kind of verify that we're in the ballpark on these because when we do the financial analysis, we want to do it based on what we feel are reasonably supported projects rather than, and understanding that you still can and will likely make changes. But if there's something that's like way out of whack, we want to adjust that on the front end tonight so that we have a better set of numbers for you when we come back.
Sounds good. How do you want to do this, Lynn? Do you want to go through line by line? Do you want us just to ask questions based off a year?
I think if you just want to ask questions on things that concern you or that you have further questions. I also, for years 23 and 24, have most support. I have some, staff has prepared support sheets with justification and some of them have pictures. So if you have any questions, I can try and pull those sheets up and explain to you what those items are and why they're proposing them.
Okay. Why don't we start off with 2023? Just overall, and I'm sorry if I've missed this, but is the fire capital fund a new column?
Oh.
Have we always had a fire capital fund?
We've always had a fire capital fund?
Yes. Okay. So my question, starting with the Third Street Bridge. I thought the number that we were looking at was significantly lower than that. Does that include the engineering costs for that?
Yeah, so it's about 20,000 in engineering, but we're estimating that about 130,000 could be flood-proofy related. And so those costs are covered under the bridge bond.
Okay. Moving down, I had a question about certified levy, the $75,000, is that for engineering help?
It's, yeah, I would say I'd call it contingency. So we have one built in 23 and then another built in, I think, maybe 20. I've, you know, based on the information that we have, we believe that we're covered, you know, for match. But I think as we all know, going through projects, things can and often do happen. And so we just feel like $150,000 is a good kind of contingency fund, just in case, you know. As we all know, it's a little bit of a moving target about what this project is and when it's going to occur. But often times we do have, you know, some cash flow types of things. So like, for example, the, the money that we're getting from the federal government related to the project requires that the city have, what's it called, an accessible?
ADA transition.
ADA transition plan. So in order to do that, you have to work with Bolton and make on what amounts to be close to a $20,000 ADA transition plan to look at all our sidewalks and pedestrian ramps throughout the city, so.
Ooh, throughout the whole city?
Throughout the whole city. So in order to.
We shouldn't be doing too bad on that at this point, should we?
No. I just think the cost comes in with the actually like GTSing every single ramp and doing an analysis, so.
Still kind of a small price to pay for two.
Yes, 100%.
And then the only other question that I had was on the PRV replacements. Is that related to the water event in the?
So the PRV replacements, that wording is something we might want to change a little bit, but it's, the Mount Hope PRV specifically needs to be upgraded. And then as part of the, when we were doing our investigations over the last few months in the water system, we did identify some other valves in the system that are in need of replacement as well. So we want to get those addressed as soon as possible.
But this doesn't talk about kind of what you've mentioned, Brent, about the single PRVs for homes in those high-pressure areas? Not that, okay. Those are my questions for 2023. Anybody else have questions for next year?
The tractor with the plow and blower, is that for the trail? Yes. Yes.
Yep.
And then I have one other question for oversizing. So if we're oversizing the sanitary sewer, and that's what we're including the cost for, do we recoup that at all from the next developer that comes in because we've oversized our system? Do we just eat this every year because we just?
Yeah, essentially you're recouping it by, I mean, the oversizing cost is built into the overall costs. And so that's what we end up charging for connection fees. So they're essentially paying for that. That's why we're collecting the fees that we do to.
To offset the oversizing?
Well, not really to offset it. We have that charge, so that's why we collect that amount of fee and pay for it. But yes, opt against offset is the right.
Okay. Okay.
Next year, questions?
Yeah.
I have a question on, and I was looking ahead to the 2024, but do we, it looks like we switched what wells would be worked on next? Because I think the previous long-term financial plan had in 2023 wells.
Yeah.
Wells one and three in electrical rehab?
Yeah. So I think Erin or Chad could speak to that because we initially looked at it, but then when we had someone take a look at it, the scope increased. So Erin or Chad might jump in.
So well, so well, five and six is in 2023. Those are better producing wells than one and three. So that's why one and three moved back to 2024.
Mainly towards electrical components.
Oh. Electrical components, that's probably in Chad's wheelhouse.
Well, one is one of the original wells for the city of Carver back before there was any development kind of north on Mount Hope.
Okay.
So those are the original components. So they're extremely old, I would say, you know, at least 40, 50 years old.
Careful with these stakes.
Yeah, watch this.
For electrical components.
Read the roadmap.
Same wheelhouse, so that's all right. So we got pricing to upgrade them, but really it's actually cheaper to tear them all out and replace new. And we were trying to work it in with some of the ARPA money, but we just couldn't get it to go with the ARPA money. So we moved it up. We want to get five and six, like Erin was saying, six is going to be a higher production well than one and three combined. So we wanted to get that going first. And then we had the capacity to go without well one and three for a while.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Okay.
All right. We'll be on to 2024. Let's see. The tower recoding number seems really high. Why did I feel like we were talking about lower numbers when we talked about repainting?
It was adjusted for inflation.
And the cost of paint is extraordinary because of.
Were we talking like $200,000 though when we talked?
No, it was more than that.
No, it was like a million. Was it? Okay.
Yeah, it might have been a very early discussion of your, seeing how far money could go, but spot repair versus full recode is justifying a full recode.
Okay.
Do you want to put your attention on that first item, public services, storage, really with turnout gear addition? Not something that you necessarily need to decide tonight, but I would say sometime this fall, I'd be looking to get some feedback from the council on your comfort level with like starting that process because, you know, we've all been through the city hall process. And, you know, we have to do a little bit of, we have to, one, we have to do some work on kind of designing the space with the architects and, you know, public services and the fire department and updating the cost and then taking that information and, you know, doing some community engagement with residents on cost and design. So it's, you know, in order to be ready for spring of 24, you know, I would say like the sooner that we can start on that, so we don't get in a position where we're feeling crunched on the community engagement piece, the better. So I guess my ask for you tonight is, are you more or less comfortable with that idea of 24? Because a lot of the dynamics shift if it's 25 or later. But if it's 24, you know, that runway gets pretty shortened up pretty quickly, so.
Did we have, no, we had funds for this from, is this one that we had funds for for the turnout gear building?
No.
The turnout gear.
We got turnout gear through funds. This is for the building addition.
Okay.
So this is completely self or financed. We refinance through a bond issue.
I can't remember the letters that were, that, all that money from.
Yeah. It's a little bit of an element. So when we, and this kind of maybe does a little bit of a transition into this. So what we're, what we tried to do, and you'll see it in the budget presentation that Lynette prepared, is we're taking some of our capital equipment and we're trying to purchase it with cash as kind of that initiative to try to get away from the equipment certificate. However, we're, we can't go from kind of zero to 60, if you will, because if we add $300,000 to the levy, there's significant impacts. And so we are, we're showing, we're contemplating that debt issuance for kind of threefold things, the public services building, fire department addition, the equipment certificate, and then that water work, so the quoting, and then the Southwest Service Area Charge. So they all have different pots of like how that debt would be repaid. But as we, as we have kind of discussed, there's benefit for the city to going out in one year. Now, is this, is this the right year to do that? You know, one of the things that, you know, Lynette discussed during her kickoff to the council a few weeks ago was we do have some debt falling off in not only this year, but in the following year. So there is an opportunity to like mitigate some of that levy impact. But as with anything, you have to weigh the pros and cons of the other priorities that you may have. But just wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of like what we're thinking that debt might look like in that year connected to these things and give you a chance to think about it and give us some feedback.
So are you thinking the completion dates out of the building is going to be 2024 or is that going to lead into 2025?
Um, that I don't have. I couldn't.
Okay.
I would only be speculating.
Okay. Here's the reason I ask that is because if we, if we're looking at building this new building in the year 2024, which depending when that gets going, it could be completed in 2025, we have a lot of public services vehicles and loaders that are coming, and I don't want to purchase all of these if we have no place to store them. I would rather just be like a chicken or the egg here, but I feel like we should be having the building and then filling it up with our equipment. So, because we have an end loader, we're adding a truck once a replacement. But then when we hit 2025, which is the very next year, we've got another truck and we've got another large plow truck coming.
Yeah. I wouldn't argue that. What I would say like the front-end loader is replacement.
Okay.
The, and the other thing is if, if you wait and you go for an equipment certificate, you're probably spending anywhere from 15 to 20,000 dollars to do another debt issuance. So you could try to maybe finance it internally. But I don't know if you want to speak to that, Lyn?
Yeah, you can take out an equipment certificate like through your local bank, just like a loan, just like you would, like a personal loan or something. You're just going to pay in whatever interest rate that they have.
But wouldn't that be happening any either of years?
If you, if we like grouped together the bond, we would have a certain amount of time to use it. So we might be able to purchase the equipment in 25, just depending on the timing of the bond.
You wouldn't necessarily have to purchase the vehicles in 24. You could wait until 25. And frankly, in a lot of cases, at least according to Chad, we might be waiting a year to get some of these pieces right. But so, but it's a fair point.
Yes, very good point.
Kristi, I hear what you're saying. I think we're probably already there for the need for storage space because if you go to the public services garage at the fire station, cramped, like before, years ago, I ran around with Brian Scope and we took a look at everything. And there's just need space.
Oh, I don't have a problem with the space. I'm just saying I'd rather have the space.
Right.
Rather than buying all this equipment to leave it sit somewhere we don't have space for it.
Agreed.
Chad, would you mind jumping in it? Is that a concern of yours or can you just tell us about the equipment and if it would have space or if it'd be stored outside? I can.
Some of the trucks currently are stored outside. You know, they leave them hooked up to trailers, so it's a little bit more efficient in the mornings to get going. But I mean, we, we do have equipment sitting outside now.
So there is stuff outside. So we would be adding technically, we'd be adding more to outside without the building. And then, because right now, because this is going to go where the cages at up there, right? Well, that's what I call it, the fencing of the cage.
Yeah.
Maybe let's not use sensor.
What's left for equipment? But anyway, so is that, I mean, I know that's dirt and gravel back there, right? So is some of this just being, it's kind of also like dump area for, for others, I don't know. What else? There's, I haven't been back in a while.
There's some materials stored back there, but mostly, mostly equipment.
Okay.
Anything else or questions on 2024?
Would you, just a question, would you rather see the equipment in 25 then or you want to wait and see what the impacts are for 24?
I mean, we have, excuse me, the replacement truck, right? So that's fine in 24.
The front-end loader would be a replacement to.
That's replacement?
Is what?
1989.
So that's it?
Yeah.
Some of the equipment we did push from 23. Actually, most of it we pushed to 24, just for the timing of the bond.
Okay. So the loader's replacement, replacement trucks obviously replaced.
The command wheels.
Yeah, yeah. So what really you'd buy at the end of 20, well, in 2025, you'd have to find a place for the new plow truck and then the new big plow truck. Is that right? Those are the only two that you'd really be finding space for?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
And then move the other stuff back.
I'm comfortable with continuing with this as it is. I see where you're coming from, but I like the idea of paying for this equipment outright instead of doing a equipment certificate when we can.
And I'm fine with it now, too. I mean, just there's a lot of vehicles, you know, and it's not a replacement, it takes a little.[1728.27] Yeah, off my, myself, that's fine. Well, I don't know who we put in them.
All right, 2025, any questions, comments?
Let's say place some, some of those then, because we're looking forward to these.
You know, it's a little bit of a prelude to Dan's presentation, but Dan, could you just give a little snapshot of how we landed on that million dollars for 2025?
The turn back?
Totally, let's just.
You got us already on that one.
That is what you would call and a, a well thought out detailed guess. So the best one I can put it is.
Engineers.
We, we, we're expecting, we're expecting some investment at some point to be determined by, by you. And all I can do at this point is approximate what is typical for a corridor like this and understanding we have some money coming in that could come from the county. I, I took a, took a rough estimate. To be further defined, that number will change.
Okay, so this is, so we consider this million to be on top of what the county might do already, like with the county making a kick in?
Is the county going to do the work or are they just going to pay us and we have to contract?
Great question.
Yeah, the next history session.
That'll be right in there, so I'll walk through the two options for you.
Is the million dollars not counting state aid money? That would be money that the city has from the.
Yeah, this doesn't go into where the money would come from.
This is just a transfer.
This is a million dollars, if we said we had a million dollars in state aid, we could say that million is going to be a, a loan from state aid because you can, you can advance spend on state aid. So that would be something that Lynne would put some recommendations on once we decide what the number would be.
Would we have a million dollars from state aid to pay for that?
No, but you can, you can advance, uh, you could, you could take a loan, you could spend the head on your balances, probably not all of that, but a decent amount, so.
But that would dismantle a little bit the plan that we have for payment management.
It would impact it, so.
Well, we'd like.
Yeah, okay.
Hold a pin on those thoughts.
Okay, okay.
Dan will get you back to that.
Okay, um, I don't have any other comments or questions for '25, '26, '27. Does anybody else?
The twenty, most of the things should be the same, so '27 is the new year, so that's something you haven't seen, we dropped the downtown park back to '27, which is fundamentally a, an exercise and when the park dedication can handle that type of investment.
And we think that that's what it will be.
What Dan said, our best educated guess.
Okay, okay. All right. Going back to what I think Lynne needs from us, are we okay with everything that's lined up for 2023? I am.
I am.
I'm fine with that.
I have one more question. So when we're looking at 2023 and 2024, it's, we have, we have, oh, where'd I go? Okay, public services, storage building, turnout addition, and then we have in 2024, turnout gear building addition. Help me explain the differences of what we're doing here.
The hundred and eight thousand is essentially, so let's say, a mark for financing, so we'll do an interfund loan, but it's a, the architectural fees that we'll have to pay to get the building situated, so we'll have to, you're not going to see it in the general fund budget because we'll reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds.
Okay.
But we're showing it just because you're, it's a cost that we want to identify.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Are you conceptually good with 2023?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Lynn, do you need anything else from us?
I guess the biggest piece would be also just the timing of the public services and turnout gear, just wanted to make sure that that timing is okay. I mean, I know it's a couple of years old, but.
Yeah, I think you guys know that I wanted turnout gear addition yesterday, so I'm, just because it'll impact the long-term financial plan and that's really in motion and hopefully by September 6th, I'll have some more information on that for you with utility rates and other really good information. Yes, okay. Christie, thoughts on turnout here and public services in '24?
Thumbs up.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm good.
Sorry to catch you. Glenn?
2024 is an expensive year.
Yep. Growing pains.
Yeah, um. Is there any way? Is there any way we can either move up to 2023 or push back to '25 some of this stuff out of '24 so it's not as bang a bang in that year?
Well, I'd say like, I'd point back to like they're all being paid for through different pots of money. So like the, the four point two five for the utility extension, that's going to be paid through trunk fees by new development.
Yeah.
The public services building and turnout addition, yes, that's general fund. But that, you know, the equipment to Lynne's point and, um, you know, but frankly, all that equipment was more or less in '23 and I asked. Chad, I think you can push it to '24 because that would be a bonding year.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you have maximum flexibility to do whatever you think of what, what we're trying to do, and I think you kind of are highlighting it as like we're trying to keep that levy so it doesn't have a big roller coaster effect, and we think this puts us in a good position to do that, so.
We're spending a lot just from different pots and different sources.
Yes.
And engineering fees.
Lori?
You're looking to still repeat back in the 2024?
On the public services building.
Yeah, to me, it's a priority, so that, I know it means we start making some decisions and learning more about options, so I'd like to see it where it's at.
Okay, I think you got four thumbs up, great.
I think the, as Lynne's kind of bringing up the budget, so that's a good segue. I think one of the biggest challenges, and it's a good challenge to have, is managing this influx in tax base. And so it's not kind of, I think, what as a council you collectively have been used to with kind of slight or moderate increases where, you know, we, or, you know, it's a little bit exacerbated this year by, you know, just the regular market increase, which is, you know, the same people are paying the property taxes, so you don't want to like, say just because your value goes up, we're going to come on and pay you more. But there is a bunch of new construction value and based on where our building permits have been in the last several years, we should expect to, at least in the near term, continue with that, and so managing that compared to what you see in this capital plan is, you know, a huge task, so, um, with that, Lynne?
And I, it just kind of made me to feedback on that. I think, I know you're doing this, but I just want to say it, I want to make sure that we see, my desire is not to have peaks and valleys and have one year be like, ooh, you know, if we can have that as, you know, much of a level, not decline, that's my goal because, and I, I think you're doing a good job with that, um, but I just want to make sure that we continue that in the future.
I think that's really important too, having to take those big bites. It's painful not only for us here to hear, but we're also residents, the same thing for everyone else, it's painful to have to look through that.
Well, one of the things that we, Lynne and I can work on together with the financial plan is we, we could almost create kind of like a skeleton 2024 budget, understanding like the debt service that you would have. It won't be like, I thought you said it was going to be one point one and then one point two, but it, it give you enough of a, you know, if we, um, push for maybe the same increase in new construction, we could maybe give you a reasonable, um, scope of like what you could expect and you can maybe use that to help you make some decisions.
Yeah. All right, I have number three, the draft general fund 2023 budget.
All right, so we are at August 15th, the council will review and update a long-term financial plan, we just did that.
Can we take a minute and look at the 2027?
We're going to?
We did.
Oh.
Yeah, we can. I, I had one thing and I noticed it now, so that's why, um, is I, I would like, like to have seen the communication specialist stay in 2026.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with 2027, actually. I don't know, I'll argue that we need her in 2020.
Yeah, I was like, I don't like seeing it keep getting pushed out, like I, I like the explanation for why some of the other things are pushed out, um, but for that one, it doesn't sit as well with me.
In 2026, but to me, I want to make sure too, if we're putting on a full-time position here, there's enough for a full-time person to do. I mean, that's forty hours a week of communications, and so we are going to be growing, I mean, we're going to get bigger and bigger, so it certainly makes sense to me that we have that, but my goal is to not bring out a communication specialist and then have to try and fill her time or his time with something else because we don't have forty hours, fifty-two weeks a year to fill up a communication specialist either.
Well, I think to help, what we could do is we could prepare an analysis on that because we, Bolton and Mika is doing a lot of that work for us through Nicole and Laura. So if, we have to ask for that, I think you just run a total for us that might, I don't have that number yet, but we could share that.
We can track it annually, I mean, all you can just sum it up. It's to a consistent threshold.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could look at, if you could look at it multiple years, that would help.
Yep, that's very easy to do.
Estimate how much time we spent on, after being in the first.
That'd be helpful, please.
Okay, that was my last thing that caught my attention.
No, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, now 2023.
Perfect, yes, so we're going to work on refining our budget based on your feedback tonight, and we got the information from Carver County on Friday, so I was pretty excited about that, so now we can provide some tax impact on the average value home and market value information, so that was a little unexpected.
That was way early, it was late last year.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, last year, they had to take some extra time to get the plus disparities numbers, which impacts us or can impact us significantly.
Yep, so September 19th, the council will consider adopting the preliminary levy, so we have a little bit of work to do before that. Our next meeting will be September 6th, where we'll do some more work on the budget. And that is the schedule, so. All right, so you guys have seen this slide, our new construction value of seventy-eight million, and the 2022 total percentage change is thirty-one percent in the city of Carver Girl. So the market change is a hundred and forty-four million. This graph just shows the new residential construction value and how it's changed since 2015. And just see the Steve Klein as it starts, 2018 there.
Lynne, would you mind backing up this slide as well, kind of hit on a point, so when we start talking about market value and that there's a certain, like the twenty-two and nearly a half percent change in market value, that's on the average home, so they, you know, it's basically all the value and they do a factor. There are going to be, I would say probably newer homes in the community, maybe within the last five years that didn't experience that twenty-two and a half percent increase. So what we're showing, in the later slide, Lynne shows that average value home going from three twenty-eight to four ten, you know, we're trying to make sure there's not a significant tax impact. There are going to be homes that probably were already at that four-ten that are going to have, you know, likely a significant tax decrease, at least where we're at today. So I just wanted to emphasize that this is average. There are some homes that maybe went down in value or stayed the same. Obviously, there's a lot that went up, but I just wanted to hit on the point that this is an average value increase and not for every single parcel, so.
All right, so this is just the new residential construction value, this doesn't have the market values on it. So home valuations, we talked about this as well, Carver County has seen some of the highest increasing values, exceeding twenty percent, and it's more than they've seen in recent memory. And any questions should be addressed with the assessor's office. We at the city do not do individual assessing of the property evaluations, so we contract with Carver County on that. General fund revenues for 2023 preliminary, we're taking a little bit of a conservative increase of seven point seven percent in building permit revenue for a seven hundred thousand dollars in total. Just with the increase in the interest rates lately, we're just kind of backing off from our hundred and twenty homes a year to about a hundred homes a year. Local government aid, we got our number and that is decreasing and we'll probably continue to see a decrease just as the city of Carver grows. Some cities in Minnesota don't get local government aid, so.
Just one piece to add on, I have this in my memo, but the, the building permit number is the one that kind of keeps me up at night, not literally, but.
Literally.
But as we know, I mean, there's, it's subject to market conditions and so, you know, we've, you know, we've been in a position where we've budgeted conservatively, but it's maybe gone higher, but, you know, we've also been in positions, you know, in the late two thousands where that didn't come to play, and so it's just a, a number that we're going to have to monitor, but it's, you know, by far the most, could be the most sub, you know, number that's subject, that influences, that we can't control. I mean, it's a big, it's a bigger number, so I just wanted to kind of highlight that. Have you all joined in my anxiety?
Appreciate that.
Yep, so currently we're planning for a special capital fund transfer in of a hundred thousand dollars for just tax relief. That's what we have so far, and here I just have it broken out into pie charts, so you can just visually see that property taxes make up most of our general fund revenues and then followed by fees, licenses and permits. That would be building permits and then as well aids and grants.
When we look at the slide, this, again, the next time?
Yeah.
Can you have the comparison to last year's pie chart as to this year's so that we can see where the, um, it's coming from?
Yep.
That'd be great, thank you.
Can I ask one on that last slide too? In the future, could we see a breakdown of the second one with the fees, license permits? Now that I've taken more about what the billing fees is, how much of that is the twenty-two point three and then like what's the other permits and fees? Because I imagine the other like permits fees are the side by sides or rental.
Liquor license.
Liquor license, okay.
Here I just called out some of our top general fund expenses, not calling, not talking about any of the wages or benefits. Our police contract is two hundred and sixty-two thousand for next year, capital outlay, we have planned spending cash of a hundred and thirty thousand. Parks maintenance, bulk ice control, that's for our public services, we buy all the ice salt and stuff in bulk. Spring cleanup, we have twenty-eight thousand budgeted for that, and then fire department protective gear, southwest prime, we have an initial budget planned of twenty thousand, and then lease overtime and yard waste collection. We have two yard waste collection events planned at about three thousand each.
Excited to see that.
Yay. So here's just a, a visual of the general fund expenditures and each department, we kind of, you know, we each have our departments that we break all of these items up into. We have council admin elections, government buildings, planning, now you can see that public services, you know, it's, they do a lot in, in the city, you know. Way to go, Chad. He's constantly asking me for money. So, no, I'm kidding. So moving on to employee pay and benefits, uh, no full-time staffing additions planned for '23. We have one part-time, hmm, public services employee proposed for seven hundred and twenty-eight hours paying sixteen dollars an hour. So about a month ago, we brought to you the, the new pay scale, um, which indicated an eight percent increase to the wage scale based on the consumer price index, I believe. So that is, our '23 budget is reflecting that increase to the wage scale. Overall, full-time employees are proposed to get a three percent pay increase. An a five percent pay increase proposed for all part-time employees of the city, which in most case affects public services and the fire. So just going back to that third bullet, the, the eight percent increase to the wage scale, if you guys remember, it was those employees who fall in the entry level positions will receive up to an eight percent increase to get them back onto the wage scale, and that only affects nine employees at the city right now. So full-time employees, so here, I just explained that a little bit. Anyway, I got ahead of myself.
And all your presentations.
Yeah, so entry level positions may receive more than three percent just to get them back on the scale. Health insurance benefits, we are completely estimating this right now at five percent. Hopefully that is a safe estimate. And again, fire department is going to go from thirteen twenty-one to fourteen fifty, that's our, that's our estimate, and fire officer pay also five percent. And right now, we are performing a pension benefit analysis, but for '23, we're planning on a hundred dollars.
Just a minute, Lynne, but isn't the firefighter increase closer to ten percent, a dollar thirty an hour?
Oh, you know what? We had fourteen fifty and then we went to five percent and I forgot to change it to fourteen fifty, so it should be thirteen, like sixty, seventy.
Okay, okay.
Yes, thank you.
So fourteen fifty is correct.
No, sorry, we did a lot of changes, I apologize.
So five percent of thirteen twenty-one.
Gotcha.
What is that right?
Thirty-three percent. Someone said a really good line in a meeting recently, they're like, well, I think it was HBC meeting, he was like, I don't, I can't do math in my head, and they practically looked at me.
Everything's seventy-three percent.
Do our sex, right? Just under fourteen dollars. So then our contracted services, we have, we contract with the Carver County Sheriff for policing, Kennedy and Graven through legal. Our legal and engineering, those needs change every year based on what our projects are going to be for the year. Auditing, that's going to increase kind of at a, you know, the same rate every year, just based on our growth and, and just what they charge every year. They increase it a little bit every year. Parks and then assessing as well, those are gonna kind of increase at the same level every year.
One of the things I can, just a little commercial for our strategic planning, is I had a conversation with Mike Woolley from the sheriff's office last week, and wanted to have a conversation with the council about building and policing or law enforcement plan for the city through the end of the decade. I think right now, you know, we're just kind of looking at, looking at police coverage on a year-by-year basis, but I think we might be better served by having some established metrics of when we add another officer. And then to, you know, Glenn's point earlier in the meeting, like, if we get, if we know we're adding a deputy when they're at a hundred thousand dollars a crack, we might wanna start kind of building that into our annual budget, so that in twenty-twenty-six, we just don't have to add a hundred thousand dollars to pick up a deputy that all of a sudden feels like we don't have any choice because of maybe what's happening in the community at that time. So one, I'll have more information, but a topic that I wanted to kind of shed some light on.
Here's a preview of the debt service. As Brent mentioned, we will be getting rid of about a hundred thousand dollars after next year for the twenty-fifteen B refunding. But currently, our debt service levy will be at one-point-three million, which is down about eleven percent from twenty-twenty-two, which is where it was at, one-point-five million. Our street maintenance levy and payment management plan. So as you know, we are now levying for our street maintenance, just to show residents that we truly care about our infrastructure. So for twenty-twenty-three, there's three-hundred-and-twenty thousand of levy proposed. And this is the second year that this street maintenance levy has been in place. And it's showing the areas on here that we have an updated payment management plan. There's going to be a millon overlay of the River Oaks development, and four-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand will be from the street maintenance fund, and then state aid will use five-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand of that. And there will be a seal code planned as well.
I have a question for maybe Chad or you guys. Elm Drive, were those redone recently? Are they parts different?
Old Elm was done, Elm Drive West was, I don't think was done.
I always asked about that, though, and you said that it scored amazing.
It scored okay.
Both of the Elms did?
No.
Well, Elm Drive was, that was recently reconstructed.
Two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Elm Drive did it, the mayor asked about that, it didn't score enough to get it included in this cycle.
Okay, sounds good.
Capital improvement needs, this is a review from where we just were about fifteen minutes ago. And then it shows the source of the funds where we're hoping to pay for these items. As we talked about, the public services and fire, like architectural, construction and drawings, that will be an interfund loan to be repaid by the project funding, so we can get going on that. The financial systems and accounting software, that'll be the second half of that payment that we will be doing to acquire the BSNA for financing, accounting, and utility billing. And then we've got the mower and the tractor. So as Brent said, we're hoping to start kind of purchasing some of these things with cash a little bit more. It'd be nice to set up kind of like a special capital fund, almost like a capital, capital improvement, like fund, where we start saving a little bit of money every year to pay cash for things, so that's the hope. General fund levy history, you can see across the bottom here, together with the general levy, the debt service, and the street maintenance levy, where we have been the past few years. Prelimarily, we are at a seven-point-two percent increase. Last year, we were at eleven-point-nine percent. Like I said, I got the information from Carver County on Friday, so I was able to throw this slide in here. So what I did is I took the twenty-twenty-two final tax rate, and then I threw our preliminary tax rate on here, and I calculated what the tax, the city tax would be on a four-hundred-and-ten-thousand, four-hundred-and-ten-eight, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand-eight-hundred home. With our new tax rate and then the old, last year's tax rate, the proposed tax rate. So as you can see, we're still falling into that bottom half, if, just based on that rate. But as you can also see, with the tax capacity, market value calculation, the rate dropped over ten percent. So this slide shows just an estimated property taxes on the average valued home. So last year, the average valued home was three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. This homestead exclusion is a calculation that is Minnesota Department of Revenue, they, it's a long calculation that I could show you, and it's thirty thousand dollars times nine percent of.
That's what we believe in. Yep, we believe everything.
Yeah, so after you get over four-hundred thousand, though, it, it fades out, right? So that's why this one looks like two-hundred, you only get that much credit, you're like, well, thanks a lot.
Truly, I'm sure that's what they, yeah.
Yeah.
What you got at four-hundred and ten?
So, so here is what you would have paid last year on your home, and now your home is worth more, and the tax rate went down, but look at that, you have a two percent decrease from twenty-twenty-two, so. If, if the levy stays where it's at, so that's, look at it, it looks like. So here, comparing if your house, if you had a three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollar home last year with a tax rate of forty-eight percent, and then this year. So here, I just kind of threw the two different valued homes on here, so you can see what they would pay.
Told you we needed a fight answer right here.
So why does your tax bill change? Market value changes, special assessments, local levies, school district approved referendums, and legislative changes, that would be like that market value exclusion calculation. There has been talk about changing that, but I'm glad they didn't, so. What's changing in twenty-three? As we talked about, our average value home increased over twenty percent. The new construction value, estimated population is increasing. And we went, you know, we're estimating about a hundred new homes. We're getting a little bit conservative just because of the, you know, interest rates and everything. And the city tax rate right now, with where we sit at our preliminary levy, is at thirty-seven percent. So for twenty-three budget priorities and process, we are looking for council to provide comments and direction to integrate into our next draft, which is coming up on September sixth. We'll continue to finalize the unknown budget items, such as healthcare, insurance, and all of those items. And then the council will consider adopting a preliminary tax levy on September nineteenth. And then enterprise fund budgets.
Can you go back to the slide where you showed what it was in twenty-nineteen? Back one more, I think. Um, I like this a lot. I like this a lot. I was nervous, and I think I shared with probably both of you, I didn't know what that was gonna look like with the valuations going up so high. And this budget looks solid to me. There's a lot in there that, you know, from the farmers markets to, you know, a lot of quality-of-life things, but a lot of needs that we're getting taken care of, I like it. Anybody else have any comments?
This is good, I don't have much on this.
Okay.
I like.
I know, right?
Because kind of seeing what our priorities are for even twenty-twenty-four, like, it like, um.
I was just looking at the general fund.
It's probably the street maintenance line item that I like the most, like, I can really see, like, okay, we needed that, we planned for this, and that's gonna be like an impact that'll notice that year.
I like the levy history and showing next year's draft, where our levy is up to thirty-eight or a three-point-eight mil, and yet it's still only a seven-point-two percent increase, which is, for everything that we've done the last three years, that's just by growth, that that number's coming down, which is good. I like the way the budget's looking.
All right.
Yeah. I wasn't in for another eleven-point-nine percent year, so.
No.
Some of the country was looking a lot better, so we're good.
It was the fourteen-point-five that was the one that was.
Also. I don't think we've ever been this pleased with a budget.
Well, I have to thank Brent, because he's been a great help.
He's great with numbers.
He is.
He is, he went over to thirty-three percent.
Okay.
He knows the numbers, which I don't.
Thank you for the feedback, okay.
We're keeping on the.
Yes, yeah.
Wouldn't forget to see what those other numbers were.
Thanks for the feedback on the slides, and I'll get my number.
All right, kidding. Okay, I remember for the casaw forty turnback.
The million-dollar turnback.
From us.
Back to the spending side equation again.
Better be good.
From the engineers. Oh, you bet, that's the most exciting thing. All right, so this is a review, so I'm gonna go quickly.
I was gonna say, no rush, but you have about seventeen minutes.
Yeah, I'm clocking it here, so I'm gonna go quickly on the front end, because this is all review. So obviously, we're talking about the forty turnback, and, you know, I think we're gonna just breeze through the, the front end here, you know, the corridor, of course, eleven to sixty-one. It's currently a county road, subject to a turnback to the city. The condition is west half, good condition, east half, there's, there's more issues that would actually cause, you know, some, some cash planning to be in the mix here. So I'll explain to you what that will mean shortly. As far as the turnback goes, we've covered what a turnback is. It's ultimately gonna be a city road in the future from county jurisdiction. It means it is, you are the lead agency on all regulatory decision-making, once it becomes a city. So if the county leaves it, then the city takes it over. One benefit to that, on the tail end of this, should this go through, is you also would be a recipient of MSA funds because it is your road. So that's one of the things that we're gonna be talking about, but you also assume all maintenance and improvement priorities have to be planned for, rehabilitation needs are the city at that point. So this is the topic of the day. We've talked through the turnback process and what it is. I think we've reviewed the prior tentative agreements between the county and the city that, when the city became MSA, it would be somewhat of a trigger to discuss the actual process to turn it back. Where we're at now is simply put, the agreement. There's gonna be an agreement between the city and the county. The county will, has a template in which you basically draft out what are the terms, terms of the turnback. There's all kinds of different forms, many different arrangements can occur in a turnback situation. So the, I would say, for the most part, this is somewhat of a template agreement. Says, here's the things the county's gonna do, here's the things that the city's gonna do, and accept. And so the primary issue that I would need some feedback from, from the city on at this point, is one, one big term. And that term is the, the conditions of receipt by the city are, we want this in a good condition. That's always, always what the, the receiving agency is gonna be looking at, is, is what am I getting? Is it a good improved condition, does it have all kinds of issues? And, you know, that's, that's the concern for the city, has taken on a lot of issues. So what happens in these agreements is you can put together a couple different paths. In one condition, you can say, county, I would like you to make the improvements necessary, such that this route is in, you know, good condition, the pavement is improved, and, you know, these issues that are gonna be near-term maintenance problems, go do a project and go fix them. When the road's in a nice condition, and we think we've got some life here before we have to do anything with it, then we'll turn it back or take it back. The lieu of payment is an option here, in which instead of, you say, in county, improve this road for these issues, we would like you to tell us how much money you were going to program, and say, all right, you come up with these, these dollars, you're gonna do a reclamation, for example, which is a real example here, that's gonna be subject to our, our discussion. That would have been, let's say, a million dollars. Maybe they were gonna program a million-dollar reclamation project. By this agreement, you can put in there, we would take the cash instead of the improvement. And then they'll give you the, the million dollars, and then it's the city's, at, at that point, right, to program what you would do with that. So for example, they can, they can program a reclamation project and say, that's what we would have done, is the county. And the city can say, all right, we'll take the money instead, let's take the million dollars. We think a millon overlay is fine at five-hundred thousand dollars, and then they'll take the five-hundred thousand dollars and put it towards something else, because, again, you're, you're the lead agency, and at that point, you're setting the priorities and how you spend it. But their, their position is, is gonna be, we're gonna put towards this road what we would have put towards it. And there's a couple of different ways, we have to write up this agreement, and that's what we wanna talk about today. So I'm gonna lay out the two, two ways this would play out. So there's just a couple of boxes or paragraphs in this agreement that I would be getting back to the county on based on your input tonight. And so one is, city takes the roadway conditional on rehabilitation project to bring the roadway to an agreed-upon condition. So in that case, the county would program a project, bid it, and complete the project. They would, they would, they would have another county project within the city led by Carver County. It's just gonna be what they would have done from a maintenance perspective, because in this particular case, they do actually have maintenance, maintenance work that would be programmed. It means a threshold that they would have advanced a reclamation project. So at that point, when the project is done, the agreement would say, you accept it, they both, both the county and city accept it, it's fully satisfied by agreement, it takes the roadway. At that point, you have the road, good condition, and then you're programming any improvements past that time. The county's done, they've, they've done their work, they've paid for the project. Option number two, that's one option.
Can I just go back to option number one? So when I think of a county project on a road that runs through our city, I think of Jonathan Carver Parkway, and I know that there was a cost share on that, would there be a cost share to anticipate with option A?
No, because this is part of a turnback process, so you're saying.
Okay.
You go ahead and do this. There would not be a JPA type of environment, you're, you're, the agreement would basically take care of that, this county investment.
Unless the city wanted to increase the scope.
Yes, if you guys, in, in that particular case, that, that one is just they're doing their own job. You wanna add anything to it, you're gonna do a cost share on your, your added elements.
Okay, thank you.
So that is option one, and I can return the agreement with this, with this check, or I can return it with this being a preference. City takes the roadway conditional on payment for the, to the city for an agreed-upon amount intended to be equal. The intent is to equal the amount that they would have spent on that project. So they'd estimate what a reclamation costs, we would review it and agree that, yeah, this is fair, go up or down based on what we think is appropriate. But ultimately, we go back and forth and say, all right, this is, this is a fair number to do that type of work. And then the county would provide a programmed amount for the rehabilitation, city concurs. At that point, you put that number in the agreement, say, all right, this, this agreement would be executed with whatever number that is, is determined, and then that is a line item in the agreement, that the county is going to pay you that, that amount, lump sum. And then with, with that payment, you're effectively taking the money and agreeing that we'll take care of whatever needs to be taken care of from here. And then the turnback is fully satisfied by agreement post-payment. So effectively, the county would probably plan for a check in twenty-twenty-three, for example. And then when they execute that, that payment, the turnback agreement is filled, and you have the road. So where, where we're at is, because they have a reclamation planned for it, I wasn't quite sure where they were gonna be on this. I, I had a few different thoughts on how it might be best off going into this, but because they have a reclamation planned, that's actually a more expensive payment rehab effort. If it was a millon overlay, you know, that's, that's lower cost, and might be better just to have them go, go knock it out and be done with it. The reclamation is, is full, full depth, it's, it's a fairly expensive effort. You would have some flex. The reclamation is is full depth. It's a fairly expensive effort. You would have some flexibility to determine whether or not you would do less than that, and actually you repurpose some of those funds to other things that might be priorities. So that is why we would be leaning towards a recommendation of option B is a better alternative, because you get to use that money in a different way, and it's it's a higher higher dollar. Because the reclamation is is obviously gonna be the most most comprehensive means to take care of your payments, turn everything up and redoing it. So I think you get a decent amount of money, and then you would program it as you self bid. So that being said, I'm gonna open it up for some comments before we hit the next section, because after that, you get into the this corridor, and what do you wanna do with the the corridor side of this? So this is kind of the reason for for the discussion tonight. Any any initial thoughts, comments, feedback?
Is county gonna be able to secure better, I guess, better rates, better funding for if it's on theirs? They're larger entity than the city of Carver, so it's okay.
Yes.
Second, if they lump it in with something else they're doing, are they gonna possibly be able to get better pricing?
No, it's a good question. I would say if it was a steel coat project, probably, because they do steel coats throughout the entire county, and miles and miles and miles of their restriking. Reclamations tend to be more one off, one off projects. Anything that you get into reconstruction, you tend to, you tend to advertise it, and you bid it, and you get a contractor to do that job. In that case, it's it's fairly comparable city-county when you do a single project embedded. They're both publicly bid. But yeah, I would say that would be applicable if you were doing some massive, massive effort. Then I could give some thought to if they actually had that, would have that set up.
Okay. So let's say we'll just use the million dollar number. So let's say the county, we say, yeah, this is the work we're gonna do. We agree on the million dollars. But now then from that point on, then we start our engineering and getting going. What happens if it costs more?
That's that's the risk of it. If you did, if you were gonna do the exact same project, then I, you know, that that makes less sense if you were gonna do just a reclamation. My thought is is the cash payment, the reason why you'd do that is because you would probably say, all right, well, we could kick the can like three, four years on this, and then save up for some rehab, and then you could spend that on something that you consider to be a higher priority. So I would say generally speaking, if it's the exact same project, I mean, it's kind of either or. I I would I would be thinking that you would repurpose some of that cash would be the benefit.
And considering kind of that question, can you just kind of run them through to the end? Because that might give them enough background to say, like, would you wanna keep a baseline project or add on to in certain areas?
Yeah, absolutely.
In six minutes.
Oh, boy. Need more, yeah, seven minutes, all right.
You want, I mean, you could continue this at the regular meeting if you feel like you're, I mean, this is an important topic.
Yeah, this is important.
It's fine. Do we wanna be in a, how many more do you have to go through? And then we could ask questions.
I can I can get through this in seven, seven minutes or so, and then we'll go from there.
Or so, then no, we're gonna, no, I don't like the engineers or so.
I've got, I've got two, basically two primary slides here. Those are quick ones. The big thing is on this corridor is the trail. The number one issue that you're that you're gonna be dealing with on this is the trail. I think overall, you've got, you've got, you're gonna have to do a little bit of corridor planning to figure out what that number should be. When we talked about the million dollars, ultimately, it's because we have not really done anything on trying to figure out what what would be a worthwhile investment on 40. So Glenn, Glenn asked me, and I said, this means it's gonna be between zero and, you know, whatever millions of dollars, which doesn't really help her a great deal. So I mean, truly, so at this point, we we have to get to the point of saying, all right, we wanna do nothing to this corridor, or we wanna do something, and if it is something, that's how much. It's as simple as it comes down to for a corridor study. That's what you're looking at, is what is worth spending money on? What are the improvements that are necessary? So I mean, we've got a number of things on here that are opportunities, issues, pavement, pavement rehab on the east end. It would be the cash from the county.
Wait, while you're on that side, I'm sorry.
Yep.
You talked a lot about the reclamation project. Do you know the scope of it and when?
Casey's to the east.
Okay, and when it's planned for?
East?
They would, I think they had it within the next couple of years. So I'd have to find out when they would actually execute on that.
Yeah, he said Casey's east.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
If we were something like that option B, would they be able to dictate, like a deadline to have that program, that program that's planned for the reclamation?
No, we would be with cash.
Okay, and they wouldn't, and there would be no dates tied to it staying?
You don't have to do anything.
Because you have flexibility.
At that point, you don't have to sign up at the same time.
And they're gonna wash their hands of us at that point.
Yeah, exactly.
The flexibility. I just wanna make sure they couldn't dictate a date.
They say like a briefcase full of money. But but there's there's gonna be some rules to it. You're gonna, I think you're gonna have to, you know, I'll have to look into the details of whether or not you have to spend it on the corridor or elsewhere. But I believe it's gonna be tied to the corridor.
Okay.
So the, some of the issues here, I mean, I I don't think the county's planning to do anything with with this location. And I think at some point in time, it hasn't been an issue because the volume is currently low. This is one of those things that becomes a growing nuisance. This is very old design practice. It's a 70, 78 degree angle. You know, craning your neck to the left, it's really bad practice for.
Like an 1860 practice?
Yeah. If it's horse and buggy, you know, you're gonna kill each other running into each other, you know, at that speed. So nowadays, you certainly don't wanna be looking backwards, check for cars. And so some of these things are just items that I would believe would be left as is, could be programmed, and I would say at some point in time would would be worthy of some investment to fix. The other one here is right in front of your future park access point here. There's there's some opportunities there. It's parking is crucial. It's gonna give you future access to your park. Aesthetics aren't perhaps ideal for your your entry point to your downtown. So there's there's a few things there that might be some issues and opportunities that would be considered. And then, and bust through this very simply, you've got a trail on the 40, the off road trail that would be a part of the county's comp plan and a city. Now, this one I'm gonna separate out in as far as the corridor is concerned. That's, this trail will still be on the county's comp plan. I think we'd be tying that in the agreement, that they're still gonna look at this as a linking trail. And I believe it can be regardless of whether or not it's a city, city corridor.
Just a little add on, to go back to that slide.
Yeah.
The county has reached out, they wanna schedule a meeting with Aaron and I to, they wanna kind of plan out a regional trail connection between Carver and Oconia. So you can see kind of those arrows pointing at each other, one to the southeast from Oconia, one to the northwest from Carver. So this kind of a note that may not be aware of.
So that's the county comprehensive trail planning connection we're referring to, about the 61. So there's the funding implications, and this is my last one. The county may contribute reclamation funds. I'm gonna approximate it at a million, but it could be up or down on that depending on what they have in there. So the city is not aware of the funding amounts, just to be clear. I don't know the answer to that yet, because they have to provide estimates. I I did some calculator checks on it. City will receive stated funds approximated tens of thousands annually. For this purpose and this reason alone, I would recommend we get this done. But waiting a year, it just costs one year of MSA funds. There's really no purpose in waiting at this point. You'd rather start collecting the funds sooner than later. So it's generally gonna be your best outcome in this case, if it's ever going to happen, to start drawing on MSA. It's a big addition to your system, and then it goes on top of your annual needs as a turnback. So it's another benefit here. And trail, it's a low priority trail in the county system. It's gonna be a funding champion, a champion if it's ever be completed. It's a very costly trail segment. It's unlikely to be city funded without some bond. It's bonding. It's a tough one. And then it's gonna have to need a county, city investment and competitive funding. I think this is one where you'd be searching the grants out there to see what we can get. And again, the city will need to plan and invest in developing this trail segment for advanced efforts. I would say this is a good example of city interest that's gonna exceed the county interest. So need an answer on the first red box, AirBee? And then past that, we'd be on our way with this agreement. So that gives everybody one minute.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I think what this was intended for is a preview, so we can tee this up for a future regular meeting, and then have the council to probably take a vote on an action like this, so.
Okay.
You okay with that?
I am fine with however you think it should proceed.
Do we wanna, like, I have a question.
I just don't want you to be rushed to try to take inside of this in one minute.
Yeah.
I'd like to talk about it as a meeting. We'll put it at the end of the meeting, and we'll say.
Okay.
Yeah, let's add it, because I have some questions too that I've jotted down, so.
Love you.
Sorry, you get to say.
It's a Carver for hurry tonight. Um, let's see. Okay, Christie has a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
The second by council member Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion passes. Great.